Okay. Alrighty. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting date annually indicating that this meeting would be taking place on Monday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven P. M. via Zoom webinar. Alright, thank you. Now, we have the oath of office to be administered to Amy and Sean Drew. Amy's moving from alternate one to a full member, and Sean Drew is moving from alternate two up to alternate one.
Okay, so if Sean Drew and Amy, if you would raise your right hands, and you're going to repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Amy Lawrence.
You're muted, Sean Drew.
Sorry about that. Hi, Chan Zhu-Horjani.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I would support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I'll bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the government established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm?
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly?
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
That I would faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of, and then state what your office is going to be.
Sorry, so the office is zoning board?
Right, you'll be a full member.
Okay.
And Sean Drew will be first alternate.
Okay. So.
Perform all the duties of the office.
The office of a full member of the zoning board of adjustment in Milburn.
Form of full duty of the office of the first alternative to Milburn Zoning Board of Adjustment.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. So if you would just, Eileen, have they been provided with oath allegiance?
So if you could just sign it, and you're just attested to it, and then I'll just have you sign it, and I'll send them off to your signatures.
Mine's sitting at the printer, so I'll do that tomorrow morning, if that's okay, Eileen? I can drop it off in the office.
Okay.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Eileen, do you want me to attest and just show this to you now like we did last time, or do you need?
Yeah, you'll just sign that, and then send it to me, and then I'll have Rob Simon.
Okay, great. That will be good. I still don't see Joe.
Alright, I'll take the roll. Jessica Glad?
Here.
Sean Drew Horjani?
Here.
Craig Plaitner?
Here.
Amy Lawrence?
Here.
Jody Sharma?
Here.
Steve Togar?
Here.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Here.
Alright. Well, okay, moving on, I will now ask for a nomination for the position of Chair for the Board of Adjustment for calendar year two thousand and twenty-two.
So, I think that Joe wanted to say something, but since he's not on, I think everyone knows that he's stepping down his chair. So I wanted to say, first of all, that I wanted to thank Joe for his incredible leadership as Chairman of this board for so many years. And I could say as Vice Chairwoman that I know that the amount of time and effort that goes into the role, and Joe is leaving huge shoes to fill. So on that note, I am happy to nominate another extremely dedicated member of this board, who I know will do a wonderful job stepping into the role of Chairman. And it's my honor to nominate Craig Plaitner as the next Chairman of the Milburn Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Is there a second?
A second.
Let me do a roll call.
Are there any other? Do I need to ask if there's any other motions from anyone for Chair, or no?
If there's a second, you can go to the vote.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Sean Drew Horjani?
Yes.
Congratulations to Craig, it's all yours.
Thank you so much.
You're up.
So, I realize Joe's not on yet, and I think, and it just sort of took a lot of the words that I would have said regarding Joe as well, and you know, Joe's a great teacher, and everything that I sort of know about municipal land use law, I certainly owe to him, and I'm sure if I don't do something right, he'll be the first one to make a comment about that, so. You know, I owe a huge debt of gratitude to Joe and everything that he's done for this board and will continue to do as a leader, and like I said, you know, he brought me onto this board and everything I know, I can attribute to him. So, moving on, we will be electing the Vice Chair, and you know, I actually honored to, if I nominate this person as Jessica Glad, she's been a loyal member of the board, and I would, I'm honored to nominate her to remain as Vice Chair. So is someone like to second that nomination?
Second.
Still a roll call vote. Oh, is anyone else would like to nominate for that position?
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Craig Plaitner?
Yes.
Andrew Horjani?
Yes.
Congratulations, Jessica.
Thank you.
Vice Chair. We have two more appointments that we have to cover this evening. The next up would be our appointment for Board of Adjustment Attorney. And I would be happy to nominate Rob Simon. He's been so far a fantastic attorney for the board, and been very measured and wise with his moralizations that he's written. So, do I have a second?
Get on Rob Simon. Second. Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Craig Plaitner?
Yes.
Thank you, as always, it's an honor to be part of this group and to advise on the law for the Board of Adjustment, and so thank you for the opportunity to do so in two thousand and twenty-two.
Great, we're honored.
Terrific.
Next up? One day you'll find out that I'm actually six-seven.
Really small room, a small room.
Oh, incredibly small. It's like being Joe Mapovich.
Can anybody hear me?
You hear your loud voice, Joe.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion that now that Joe is on and Joe needs to take the oath of office so that he can participate in further votes and proceedings, can we take two minutes right now and do the oath of office for Mr. Steinberg? Duber. So, Joe, if you would raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me.
Okay.
I state your name.
I, Joseph Steinberg.
You solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same,
and to the governments established in the United States and in the State of New Jersey, under the authority of the people. I further solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of member of the Milburn Township Zoning Board of Adjustment, according to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Very good, thank you.
Do you want me to sign this now?
Yes, please.
Okay, so congratulations, Joe, on your appointment to the zoning board for the nineteenth year.
Thank you, fully, actually, for the eighteenth year.
Eighteenth year, sorry.
I'm going to take the lead over since I'm still the Chair until a new Chair is elected, right?
Well, Joe, we actually went ahead.
You actually went ahead and elected a new Chair.
And Vice Chair.
And Vice Chair, and the new Chair is Craig Plaitner, and the new Vice Chair is Jessica Glad.
That was correct.
I'm amazing, aren't I? Go ahead.
Alright, so next up, we will be appointing the Board of Adjustment Secretary. I would like to nominate Eileen Davitt to that position. She has a valuable role in keeping this band together, supplying us our information, and dealing with all the aggravation so we can just do our thing every other Monday night. So, do I have a second for Eileen?
Second.
We're fighting over it.
Right. Is there anyone else that would like to be the Secretary of the Zoning Board of Adjustment? I hear no other nominations.
Amy Lauren?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Craig Plaitner?
Yes.
So next up, we have the resolution of approval of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three annual notice. And that notice has the meeting dates for the entire calendar year of two thousand and twenty-two, and the first one of two thousand and twenty-three. Any other corrections or changes to those dates at this point? Then if that's the case, I'd like to move acceptance and adoption of that resolution.
Second.
Got a voice, or?
We should take a vote on it.
Okay.
Amy Lauren?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Craig Plaitner?
Yes.
Alright, now on to the first meeting of two thousand and twenty-two. I see there's twenty-nine attendees currently in on this Zoom call. We have several people, some of those cases that will not be heard this evening, and carried to another date, so I will read those off quickly, so if you were here for those, we will see them at a different date, so.
Hey, Craig, Craig, wait one second. I know we have at least one, we have one resolution to adopt.
Oh, sorry, we have approval of minutes, correct?
And minutes as well, I think.
Okay, so let's do that. The approval of minutes for ten twenty-seven twenty-one. Any changes or adjustments to those minutes?
Two minor modifications that were sent to me by Joe Steinberg. The first was on page two, line reading, the subject property is designated as block eight oh five, lot one. And then there was another minor change on page five, line one ninety-nine. Would have a big impact on the neighboring property, I just added it at the end of that.
Any other changes, changed minutes? Otherwise, can I have a motion to adopt those minutes with the changes mentioned?
L. D. Joy, Steve, Wolfgang, Amy, Jessica, and Joe.
Okay.
Did you motion, Josh?
Yes, I did. I made a motion to adopt.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Amy on the second.
Go in favor?
Hi.
Next, we have the memorialization of calendar thirty-eight thirty-five twenty-one, Eden Kai, fourteen Clermark Drive in Short Hills. This was a denial of a extension of the patio. Eileen, is eligible to vote on this?
Everyone, all the former, well, all the former full members, everyone except Amy and Sean Drew.
Could I have a motion to adopt that memorialization?
Same moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Wolfgang, second.
Craig Plaitner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Thank you. We will now move on to the applications. As I mentioned earlier, like I said, since there are twenty-nine people out there, I just wanted to let them know that some of these applications will not be heard tonight, so I will go through them, and then we will start the first application that is going to be heard this evening. Calendar thirty-eight zero zero dash two one, which is the application for the High Center, located in four thirty-seven, four thirty-nine Milburn Avenue and seven Bodwell Terrace. That will be carried to February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two with no further notice. Next, calendar thirty-eight twenty-three twenty-one, Queen Zhou at fifteen Meadowbrook Road in Milburn, New Jersey. That's, that's interesting, I think that'd be the address, but that will be carried to February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two also. No further notice given on that. Next, we have calendar thirty-eight thirty-four twenty-one, Jaclyn Stein at thirty-four Keene Road in Short Hills. That will be carried to February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two also. And if you're here tonight on calendar thirty-eight twenty-one twenty-one, which was Sid and Grant Miller, that case has been withdrawn. And that's located sixty Stewart Road. As always, all of these updates are available at the website for the Milburn Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is kept up to date regularly. So please consult that if you are here for any of those cases this evening. Rob?
Correct, yeah. Two other things. Number one, I think there was an application by Amar Trust, three forty-six Horshorn, that is going to be carried to another date.
It's actually not being carried, they never noticed, so it just completely came off. They didn't notice for tonight's date.
Guys, they're gonna need, they're gonna need a new date.
Correct.
Okay, but just so the public is aware that that's not going to be heard tonight.
So, Amar Trust not being heard, so if you're here for that case, keep an eye on the website.
Let's construct the application because everyone's been used, because I'm going to send feedback.
Hey, Joe?
Yes.
I know, at least from my computer, I'm hearing a lot of audio feedback from your computer, and I think it may be from a TV or something in another room. No?
No, it's a problem, I guess, with the laptop. Everybody else hearing that too?
Yes.
So when we hear the applications, just mute, and so unless.
Yeah.
Thank you. Perfect. So, continuing with our twelve twenty-two-one case of calendar thirty-eight thirty-seven twenty-one, Praveen Kandula located at forty-four Canoe Brook Road in Short Hills. Bring over the applicant and professionals.
Eileen, a question for you, I think. I wasn't here on the twentieth when this was, when we started this, but I did review the video, so if you need me.
Perfect. I'll send you that.
Same here, Eileen. I wasn't here for that meeting, but I reviewed the video recording.
Perfect.
And I just want to mention, I do know the Kandulas personally, but that should not impact my decision here as a board member.
So Jody, you're able to view this application impartially, correct?
Yes, I'm able to view this application impartially.
And I have a note here that we lost, Joe lost power, so I'm not sure how much of the, how much of the application he heard, or whether he has listened to it or not.
Well, let's ask him.
Yeah.
Hey, Joe, can you unmute for a second, please?
Yes.
This was one that we had some, you were having some difficulty, you lost power for a little while?
Yes.
Sure. If you, I honestly, I don't know how much of the application you missed, you continued until you came back.
I will refuse on this application.
Alright, okay. And I do see a hand raised by someone in the gallery, who I don't know who it is. Mohan Akula? Do you want to see what they?
Sure, I guess we can.
I don't really know what they're, rather than start, and we see if they. Let's just see what question they have. Did you have a question about this application?
No, I just wanted to add some comments that I, that I know Praveen and Shweta, I know offer my support, if that's.
When we get.
We will get to that later on in the case when we open up to the public for comment.
Sure, thank you.
Alrighty.
Okay.
Go ahead, Doug.
Dr. Kandula, as well as Mr. Miller, would you like to continue where you left off?
Yes, thank you very much.
Mr. Miller, I'm sorry to interrupt you, before you get started. You understand that you're still sworn? Correct, you're under oath, right? And your license remains a good standing as compared to, as a continuation, excuse me, from the last hearing?
It does.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Just wanted to introduce myself, like I'm Sweta Kandula, my husband Praveen Kandula. And.
Doug, is it okay if we?
Doug, is it okay if we speak for a moment?
Of course, yeah, feel free.
Sounds good, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to the new board members. And we hope you all had a wonderful holiday season, and wish you a very Happy New Year. So based on the feedback we got from the last meeting, we've made several changes, which, you know, Mr. Miller will allude and delve deeper into it. But, you know, just for a gist, like, you know, we made our, made the home a little bit narrower. We made the backyard deck a little bit smaller, and even the living room a little bit narrower. We removed the rooftop deck, and we also removed the parking. We rerouted like the pavement, so that we can, they'll be able to kind of remove the parking variance. Hopefully, all these changes will show our commitment, and it'll also show our, like, you know, that we take your feedback very seriously. And we are committed to the neighborhood, we are committed to the board, and we are committed to the neighbors alike. I also would like to take this opportunity to inform the board members the need for us to pursue building a house in these crazy times, despite the stress of us being, we both are practicing physicians. And as you know, like, this past two years hasn't been, you know, the most smoothest for patient, you know, for physicians and for patients alike during these two years. We've lived in the neighborhood for about eight years, and my ten-year-old twins, our ten-year-old twins, I should say, they only know this house is their only home. They, as the neighborhood, and this is the neighborhood they grow in. And we would like for them to kind of continue to have their feel, and I'm sure, like, you know, most of your board members have had the similar opportunity. We, of course, can buy like a cookie cutter home from any builder, but we really like our street, and as I said, like, this is, this is the home like our kids grew up in, and this is the house they consider as their home. And, you know, as physicians, we don't have to be called, like, you know, COVID healthcare heroes, but rather be given the courtesy or the benefit of doubt of like a few feet to allow us to build our dream home. And, you know, hopefully, you know, you can review this, and I'll pass the comment to Mr. Miller, so he can go into the technical and, like, you know, the aspect of it.
Thank you to all the board members again.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, we really thought about the comments and the feedback that the board made at the last meeting, as well as take into consideration the members of the public that came out to comment, and really tried to digest their concerns, and really revisited what we had presented last time, and tried to make careful adjustments to take those issues under consideration and modify the design. So there was, my understanding from last time, there was really feedback on three main issues. One was, there was primarily a lot of feedback on the roof deck and the privacy that affords the neighbors, or lack of privacy it affords the neighbors. There's also talk about the driveway and the need for a turnaround area, and whether that was excessive, that there was another way that we could do the driveway, as well as that the hardships that we presented were, quote-unquote, fabricated hardships, and there should be a way to design a house without variance relief. So, since last meeting, we took those issues under consideration, and we removed the roof deck from the design. Although a roof deck is permitted in the zone under the current ordinance, we thought that would be best to remove it, since there was such a negative reaction from the public and from the neighbors. We also eliminated the location of parking to remove the backup area, which instead, we altered the plan to have a circular drive. We also pushed the house back as far as possible to minimize the amount of front yard variance relief for the front yard setback we were requesting. But unfortunately, we're unable to eliminate the side yard combined variance, which I'll get into an explanation later. So let me walk you through the revised plans, I could share my screen with me, and I'll pull them up, they'll be the same plans that you should have in front of you. Everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, so what we've done is we.
I'm sorry, Doug, before you go on, because these are new revised plans.
Yes.
Why not, and I understand that they've been on file for at least ten days before, by the board. Can you just identify the revision date for these plans?
Of course. The revision date is twelve twenty-seven twenty-one.
Thank you.
Posted five sheets. First page is the schematic site plan and zoning calculations, the subsequent plans are floor plans, and the elevations of all. So, here you can see the schematic site, and what we did is we looked at the front yard setback, and so we're currently asking for two variances. We've removed the front yard parking variance. So we're asking for front yard setback and side yard combined. All other aspects of the design, as I mentioned last time, are conforming. The floor plans overall haven't changed to a huge degree, with the exception of the removal of the roof deck, and would reduce the width of the house to push the house further back from the street. So, the property is kind of wedge-shaped, and so the issue is, as we push it back, it has to constantly get narrower to be conforming. And so, you know, what we did is we pushed it back, we shrunk the deck down, I made it a little bit shallower, and we couldn't push it back any further because we would trigger a rear yard unoccupied variance. So, in my opinion, the rear yard unoccupied variance is a greater degree of impact on the light air and open space compared to the front yard setback, especially the way that these houses are sited along Canoe Brook Drive. of impact on the light air and open space compared to the front yard setback, especially the way that these houses are sited along Canoe Brook Drive. And, you know, so there was talk about the hardships that I described last month were fabricated. And I don't think they're fabricated because of the hardship of this unusually shaped lot. With a lot, as I mentioned last time, of nearly twice the required width in the zone left us few options because, you know, just the way that the lot width is measured. In fact, this house has a lesser degree of variance relief needed than the existing house. So we're actually bringing the house more into conformance. We pushed the house back 3.2 feet and that aligns it with the setback of the house immediately to the right. So we have an equal setback to that home, which is 50 Canoe Brook. So our lot being 137.43 feet wide, where only 75 foot is required, created a huge amount of side yard combined, which really left us with a very, very minimal house. To make the house conforming, I would have to have pushed the house back five more feet and made the house 11 feet narrower. That was very, very small. I have a new exhibit and I put together something that I think could maybe help explain what this is. So this is, I guess we can mark it in, Rob, as A2 since we had A1 last month. There's a photo board. It encompasses a schematic alternate site plan, has four pictures looking at the neighboring house showing the mature screening. A chart that shows neighborhood floor areas as well as a drawing I put together that called, that's called perceived setback.
Okay, and then can just give us a date for this exhibit, A2?
It's dated today. It's dated today, 10/22.
Okay, and these photos were, were taken by you, Mr. Miller?
No, by homeowners.
By home, and when were they taken approximately?
Maybe they could add that.
This was during the summertime. We are, we were having what you call people. So at home, we wanted to just look around and see the tree, to show the foliage that the house was surrounded by.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I zoom in, the schematic alternate site plan, this is kind of a drawing I put together representing this, the property, as well as the required setbacks. And so this would represent a footprint, taking into consideration some of the comments made by board members about, you know, garage placement. You know, having the house more or faginal. And, and so this creates a volume of a house, the main volume, this kind of cube here of 43 and a half by 41 and a half. This results in a maximum floor area ratio of 3,758 square feet, not including the garage. Where in this zone, our five, based upon our lot area, we're allowed to have 6,161 square feet permitted, where if we subtract the garage would be 5677 square feet. So the way that the tax records have it, it appears that the areas listed on the tax rolls don't include the garage space. So if we flip down here, this is a neighborhood floor area. So I looked at all the neighboring houses, 34, 35, 40, 41, our house at 44, 45, 51, and 55. And if we just look at these numbers, they range in, the majority of them are over 5,000 square feet. A couple are in the mid 4,000s, one is over 6,000, and there's only one, which is a ranch across the street, which is 37, 30, 3671, that's 35 Canoe Brook Road. So, because you can see, if we designed a house with conforming setbacks, it would result in a house much smaller than the average, which is about 5,000 square feet or 5,058 of the subject properties. And the reason why this house would be so small is a direct result of the unusual pie-shaped lot. So the hardship of not having an orthogonal lot, the way that most of the other lots are kind of calculated in the zoning ordinance, somehow that's taken into consideration. So by designing something that's conforming would be much smaller in scale. And this house is actually 64%, we could actually build a house 64% larger than this. And by limiting us to such a small house, it really is unfair. And that's why we're coming to the board because of the unusual shape-shaped house and asking for variance relief. Please keep in mind that we're not asking for an FAR variance, we're actually building a house smaller than permitted in the zone. We're just asking for a couple variances to allow a more appropriately sized house to give us a little bit more width. So that we create a house that meets the needs of Schwetta and Praveen. So this exhibit is really just trying to represent that the shape of the lot is the hardship, especially when you apply the requirements of the zone. If we look at it, each of the, if we go back to the previous exhibit, which is the, the drawings, which shows the proposed house. If we look at each individual side yard setback, they're either conforming or greater than conforming. So if I was the neighbor to the right and I looked at this house, the setback would be greater than required. So there's no real detriment to them. If I was a neighbor on the left looking at the house, this side yard setback is conforming as well. So their perception of the house would be as if the house was conforming. The only place that you would see the side yard combined would be from the street. And there's such large setbacks between these houses that we're definitely preserving the light air and open space of the neighborhood. We're creating a reasonably scaled house for this neighborhood. And the only reason we need this variance, again, is because of the hardship of the pie-shaped lot. So I think what we're asking for here, although we need side yard combined variance relief, I think it still matches the intent of the ordinance. The intent of the ordinance is to create a certain amount of distance between the houses and create the feeling of spaciousness and green space. And the way that we've designed that meets that intent. So the front yard variance that I had mentioned, if we push the house back further, we would either eliminate the deck and not have any outdoor living space and still have a house that is significantly smaller than required by the zone. That would be this house here that is from the other exhibit. So if we push this back, we would have to eliminate the deck to create any more livable space and it would still be substantially smaller. Or we'd have no living space. So there really is no option besides what we're proposing. Our house is still smaller than permitted. Our lot is conforming for FAR, we're also smaller than required for lot coverage, building coverage, and front yard coverage. So we're trying to be sensitive scale to the community while providing the spaces that my clients need in their home. I think that the degree of variance relief will not be a meaningful impact on the overall bulk of the home or the neighborhood. I think it creates a more functional and more aesthetically pleasing house. And, you know, if we look lastly at the front yard setback, this exhibit that I put together here, this schematic aerial view of perceived setbacks. Because this house, and I mentioned this last time, is on this kind of jog, jig jog in the Canoe Brook Road. You know, if I drew these lines on here just representing, you know, the red line is our setback compared to, you know, matching up with the house next door. You can see as we go up the street, we're almost in the middle of the house, a few doors down. We're in the middle of the house next door. The only house that is behind that line is our, is the house immediately to our left or on this drawing, the right. And then the blue line would be, you know, if we took a point from this house here to the front of that house, you can see all the houses are much further behind that. So the perceived setback on the street is really arbitrary. I had shown pictures last time, standing in front of our current residence, looking to the right, you can't see the house, even though that's closer to the street than we are. And looking to the left, you can see the house, even though they're farther back. So, you know, in this case, the front yard setback, although the way it's calculated by creating an average, is arbitrary because the houses, the houses appear to go in and out as you go down the street. And we're creating something a little bit more consistent than that by matching it up with the house next door. So I would request the board's approval in this matter, taking into consideration that, you know, we really worked hard, that we didn't fabricate these variances. We gave up on the roof deck and we're trying to create something that is scale appropriate for the neighbor, neighborhood. And overall, I think that the benefits that we're proposing outweigh the detriments. So I'd like to open it up to the board for, for comments.
So, Mr. Miller, I have a question for you.
Sure.
On your drawings, you show, I guess it's on, let's see here, A2, sorry, A3. You show an optional balcony. What's your thoughts about eliminating that optional balcony since it's located in the side yard setback and kind of get close to the house?
Would be up to my clients, but I would be open to eliminating that balcony. This one here.
Correct.
Are you okay with that, Schwetta?
I'm sorry.
Can we close it so that it is not?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to find out what is the concern for the optional balcony?
Second floor location in the side yard setback, and you're right on top of the property setback now. So it's actually in the area of question.
So in a sense that this, the optional balcony would be a detriment, in a sense that can we have the window there?
Sure, you can have a window. I'm just saying, would you, it says optional balcony, and I'm questioning, can it be opted not?
Okay, I'm just trying to find out, like, is that like part of the setback, sideback variance, or I'm just trying to get a sense of like?
Right, is it not permitted by rules?
No, it's absolutely permitted. I'm just merely questioning as that it's an optional, it says optional balcony.
We just wanted to keep it as an option. We are not, you know, depending on like, you know, how we, we would like to, you know, once the building comes through. We were told, I mean, again, correct me if I'm wrong, we were told that that was allowed per the rules.
If it was a condition of approval to eliminate it, would you accept that?
Conditional.
So, so what he's saying is that if you, they said the only way that they're going to approve this is if you have to eliminate the balcony.
Okay.
But what is?
As it's optional on your drawings and, you know, if, if that becomes a condition, is that an issue?
Well, the reason we wanted to be, first of all, I mean, I'm sure like it was conforming to the rules.
But the thing is conforming it. We just want to see if it would be always an option as we build a house, to see if that is something that would be appealing, that's all. So we just want to have an option, but we just did not, we did not feel that was the point of the house. As I can say, our aim is to live in the house, not on top or on the side or outside the house. So we were more focused on the inside of the house as to how it will be helpful. My parents are going to be older and they'll not be able to climb stairs. So that's why we were focusing on the bedroom on the first level and among those sets. This is just an option that we kept to in more enhance the design of the house. So if that option could be allowed for us to retain, we would, it would be helpful. But if it is going to be a condition, or as the board is not going to approve the house, then yes, we would want to, as we said, we are committed to hearing the board members' concerns. And, and we want to be good neighbors. We want to be good patrons of the community. If that is hindering the perception that we are good neighbors, then yes, we would give in to the board. But we would want you to please allow us to build a house and allow us to keep the options open. But if it's the only condition on approval, then yes, we have to.
Okay, any questions of the board for Mr. Miller or? Mr. Chairman, before you, before you leave that point, you might want to ask Mr. Miller, just to clarify, at least according to my review of the plans, it looks like that the side yard combined, the way it's drawn out by the applicant, that optional balcony would be violative of, of that side yard setback.
Yes, the balcony is in the side yard combined setback for the variance.
Which I, which was my, which is what I mentioned early on, which is my premise of the question as to being optional, located in the side yard setback variance requests.
Mr. Chairman, if.
But even if it's not, they're still going to need that variance, even if there's no balcony, right?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, if, if that is the only condition for approval of the house, we are okay to give up on it. Let us at least just have a window so that light comes in. We don't have to go out in there.
I mean, as, as, as we.
There's, there's no, there's no, there's no requirement, there's no zoning variance for a window. So so with that, are there any questions of board members for the applicants?
I just have one for clarification. It was mentioned a couple of times that the deck was made smaller between the last version of the plan and this one. But when I look at the plan, it looks like the dimensions are the same. So can you clarify that, please?
Yeah, we made the, the deck about one, one foot, one inch shorter. Is it, did I, is there a typo on the drawings, but there?
I don't know. In, in both versions, it looks to me like it's 38 by 16.
Yeah, the 16 of the typo is actually 15, four. You can see we changed the number on the side, so I apologize.
No, no worries. Thanks for clarifying. Appreciate it.
Just a question.
Yeah, I, just a clarifying, a clarifying question. On the previous drawing, there was on the left side of the garage, there was room for, for a parking space for a car on the left side. Has that been eliminated in this design?
It has, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just a clarifying question here. You mentioned that the front yard setback was taken away. The side yard setback is what you're asking for primarily in this request. Just, just dwelling on the point that Craig mentioned about the, the, the optional balcony that does on the side. What does that do if you take it out in terms of numbers? The side yard setback still stays, is what I heard. But how much is it reduced by?
The balcony does not change the degree of variance relief. You know, I'm maybe reading into what Craig is saying is that because of the balcony is in the side yard setback and it is on the second floor. And being in the side yard combined variance, it would be a privacy concern for potentially the neighbor to the left. So I think that's maybe why he's suggesting it's removed, but would still have the same degree of variance relief because the setbacks do not change. The balcony is on top of the first floor portion of the, of the building. And just to clarify, we still are asking for front yard setback variance. We've just pushed the house back 3.2 feet to decrease the degree of front yard setback variance relief by bringing our house in line with the house to the right. That house is existing non-conforming as well.
Got you.
Mr. Miller, could you stop sharing your screen quick so we can see the rest of the board members? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I also just ask, I'll comment one more thing, that there is vegetation or tall trees between. And even if that balcony does come in, it will only be looking into the driveway of, of the neighbor. And if it means that you have to put more vegetations, we, we are actually tree-loving people. We are actually more, the reason, one of the reasons we focus here is we want more vegetation to be around our house. We will be happy to put more vegetations to, or I keep referring as vegetation or trees or whatever plantation, whatever that is needed to further provide additional privacy, if that helps.
Okay, any other questions of board members? Any questions from the audience? I see Chapman Jones. There's two questions, Eileen. There we go.
Four hands raised.
Got it.
Hi, can you hear me? This is, hi, I actually have comments and I just.
We're not there yet. We're, we're questions right now. So if you have any questions for the applicants, we'll get to comments in a minute.
I do not.
Okay, uh, looks like people dropped off. Deepa Penobarthi seems to have a question. Go ahead, Mrs. Penobarthi.
Yeah, this is to watch for Schweta and Praveen. If you need me to wait until further in the comment section, I'm happy to wait.
I'm sorry, do you have a question for the applicant or the applicant's professional? Or, or comment?
A comment, I'll wait.
Okay, we'll be back over. Okay, we'll be back over.
Yep, sure.
So it looks like there are no questions currently from the audience. We'll be moving to comments, comments from the audience at this time. And it looks like we have four so far, five, six, a whole bunch, oh boy. So, pick one, Eileen, we'll go that way first. Go ahead.
Wait, 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 hold on. He has to be sworn if he's giving it. You would just raise your right hand, please.
Sure.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give in the Zoom here to be truthful, true, done by the truth?
Yes, we agree.
Where do you go? Okay, uh, just state your name, spell your name and your address, please.
Absolutely. So my name is Varun Rastogi, V A R U N is my first name. My last name Rastogi, R A S T O G I. Uh, that's my wife, Nidhi.
Hi, it's N I D H I, first name, last name Rastogi, same R A S T O G I.
And we both live in fifty seven Taker Drive, which is stone throw from, uh, Shweta and Praveen.
Go ahead.
All right, so, look, I think three comments that we would want to make. One is, uh, Shweta and Praveen have been wonderful neighbors. Um, everything they have said, we will echo the comment about how helpful they have been to the neighborhood. Um, they are, uh, they have only done right things for the neighborhood. They are, as they say, tree-loving people. If you look at the way they have maintained their house, it's just a testament of that. Two, um, I would say that, um, uh, when I'm hearing this, whatever the case was presented to the board and the topic of some of the things that they have done to meet the guidelines, it's in my mind very commendable. Um, they are trying to, as you say, um, put a square peg in a round hole. Um, they are trying to maximize their house by being conformist to the, to the board and to the guidelines. Uh, and in that way, they have lost a lot of ground, a lot of space that they could have eventually built. And then third comment I would make is that when you think about even stuff like optional balcony, which is a very interesting conversation for me. Uh, if you see the way they have approached it, they want to be helpful to the board. If I was in their spot and if I would have assumed that the variance is not going to change one way or the other, you still need to ask for the variance. My reaction probably would have been a little bit more, um, steadfast than there. So I think if you put all those three things together, it just goes to show their willingness to be in the neighborhood, the willingness to be helpful to the neighborhood and willingness to conform to the board rules, so.
Thank you very much.
Happy to.
Next, Mr. Jeffrey, Jeffrey Waters.
Is there a way for me to?
Yeah, we'll move you back over. Uh, Mr. Waters, if you would unmute yourself and turn your camera on to be sworn.
Um, I'm not sure why the camera isn't on. Can you, oh, hold on. There we go. Okay.
Mr. Waters, if you just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give in, uh, tonight's Zoom here to be truthful, true, done by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Jeffrey Waters, thirty five Canoe Brook Road.
Go ahead, Mr. Waters.
Thank you. Um, I live at thirty five Canoe Brook Road, so I'm the house on the corner of Canoe Brook and Harvey. If you stand at the edge of my property and the edge of the property of the house in question, I'm probably five feet or something, five or ten feet from that. So I'm sort of right there. Uh, a little history lesson, I find this situation ironic, uh, personally and, and uh, brings me back to when we first moved in here. I don't know if there's anybody sitting on this board who was on it twenty five years ago. I'm guessing maybe not. Or maybe one person or something. But, uh, when we bought our house here in nineteen ninety five, uh, the lot immediately next to me toward fifty Canoe Brook, uh, forty four Canoe Brook, um, was for sale. There was a very small old house from the nineteen twenties on it. The lot was about two and, two and a half acres and my lot's about two and a half acres. So, uh, that lot sold to a developer and the developer proposed four houses. The four houses that in fact sit immediately adjacent to me. Now, at the time, every single person, uh, your predecessors on this board, uh, every single one unanimously said they did not agree with the proposal. But because the proposal was as of right, a term that I was not familiar with at the time, but became familiar with, that, uh, they just didn't have any way to say, or basis to say no. Okay, so there was a really subtle point having to do with setbacks. My lot is very rectangular. It's, it's deceptive how large it is because it's, it's kind of narrow and long. It goes all the way back to the par three golf course comes around behind me. This lot here was a pie-shaped lot and it curls around as Canoe Brook Road turns and, uh, comes to a point. So, the issue was with regard to setbacks that the, that the ordinance said, and I don't know if it still says this, that the setback has to equal the average of the setbacks of all the houses, two hundred and fifty feet on either side of the house. The, the technicality of it was that there's only one house that was two hundred and fifty feet on either side of the house, which is my house. So they said, well, we can't take an average of one house. But the fact is with regard to the character of the neighborhood, if you used my setback, there is no way on earth that four houses could have been approved there. It would have been three or maybe two because the side yards, because of the way the lot was shaped. They were just able to squeeze it. I mean, I went out with like a tape measure when the houses were under construction. I mean, they were to the inch, the setbacks. If he'd been forced to push back at all, he would have had to do three houses and then two. My point of, of recounting this history is that immediately across the street from the house in question, those houses were only there or at least one of them is only there because the situation was as of right. So now we have a proposal across the street, but it isn't as of right. And I wasn't on the last call, but I, I, I sort of gotten filled in on some of the issues involved here. And, you know, there's the issue about the rooftop deck, there's the issue about the style of the house, uh, which you may not like, but that isn't the basis to say no. It's a consideration, but it's not the basis to say no. But the basis to say no is, is the request for a variance. Right? And there's not a presumption that you would get the variance. To me, the presumption is you wouldn't get a variance unless you have some compelling reason for it. And I'm not sure what the compelling reason for it is here. These various measurements of side yard setbacks, combined front yard setbacks, all the other various things that go into the zoning code are there for a reason. They've evolved over many years and presumably greater minds than myself who understand these issues came up with those provisions for a reason. So my feeling is since these four houses are only there because they're as of right, directly across the street, the same principle ought to apply. Except it's the other side of the coin. I don't, I'm, I don't see why, given the tightness of everything, the variances should be granted. I think that people should conform to the voting, zoning code unless there's some compelling reason, otherwise, and I don't see what that compelling reason is. So I just wanted to make sure people knew that history of the houses there directly across the street and the basis on which they are there.
Uh, can we respond?
No, 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 we're not at this point. We're showing up in the public for comment. Thank you, Mr. Waters, for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Rohit Mittal.
Uh, hello everyone.
Wait, wait, we need to.
Turn your camera on, please be sworn in.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom here to be truthful, true, done by the truth?
Yeah, I do.
Your name, spell your name and your address, please.
Uh, my name is Rohit Mittal, uh, R O H I T is my first name, last name M I T T A L. I live on twenty one Fielding Road, uh, which is right behind, uh, the first people, Varun and Nidhi Rastogi on Taker.
Okay, I can continue.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, I mean, echoing some of the comments, um, I mean, I've, I've known the Kundulas for a long time, um, and, uh, I mean, there, I mean, I, I missed the last meeting, but I've, I've seen everything that Mr. Miller presented, uh, understood what the challenges are. And in my understanding of, of my discussions with the Kundulas as well, uh, this is, this is a very irregular, uh, lot and, uh, I, I mean, I do appreciate, I mean, all the uh, efforts that they have taken to address the concerns uh, and the zoning laws, uh, to, to give up on the rooftop decks and the, and the other areas of concern to have, uh, a, a smaller, uh, house than, uh, what they want to do. So I, I just, uh, I mean, I don't have, uh, the details of what Mr. Waters has, but just want to say that, um, I mean, the Kundulas are, are, have been living in this house for, uh, for almost eight years and uh, they have been good citizens and good neighbors. So, uh, I would, and I have no doubt that if there are more concerns from the board, that they would, they would, uh, they would be very willing to accommodate those as well. So, um, I, I would, I would appeal to the board to, uh, grant them this variance. Uh, yeah, that's, that's pretty much what I had to say today.
Thank you very much. Next up. Please turn on your mic, film and camera to be sworn.
Just please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom here to be truthful, true, done by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just state your name, spell your name and your address, please.
My name is Mohan Akula. First name is M O H A N, last name is A K U L A. Uh, my address is one thirty one Silver Spring Road, Short Hills, New Jersey.
Okay, please continue.
Yeah, um, I've been a town resident for about almost six years now. Um, I have known Praveen and Shweta since I came to this town. Um, I'm here to offer my support to Praveen and Shweta's application and urge the board to approve it. Um, um, they are physicians by profession. They're not developers. Um, I mean, they are just trying to remodel their home to their taste. And knowing Kundulas, um, you know, since the time I've known them, I view them as, uh, very careful and considerate people. They have, uh, spent a significant amount of time thinking about this remodeling decision. We've talked about it for months, actually, for many months, actually. And, um, as far as, you know, uh, uh, the way I think, you know, uh, Praveen and Shweta take their decisions, they give very careful thought and consideration to, you know, everything that's, that goes into a decision. Um, also, I believe their, uh, request is to, to be very reasonable and the changes they've made in response to the feedback they've received, uh, you know, is it just a testament to that fact? Um, having said that, you know, I request the board to grant their variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jacqueline Jones.
Just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom here to be truthful, true, done by the truth?
I do.
Your name, spell your name and your address.
My name is Jacqueline Jones, J A C Q U E L I N E, last name is Jones, J O N E S. I live at fifty Canoe Brook Road in Short Hills, New Jersey.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. You please proceed.
Hi, thank you. Thank you all for having me. Um, I just want to say a couple of things quickly. I don't want to reiterate, but I have known, um, I've lived in Short Hills. Now I've lived in this house, my husband and I, my family since, uh, a little over a decade. And, um, so we have known us with and Praveen since they moved in, since they came to our house before we could even extend ourselves to them um, with their children. They have been nothing but the best of neighbors. Um, and to, to hear them talk about their commitment to the community and the commitment to the neighborhood, the commitment to Canoe Brook Road. Um, I can give example after example from them calling me to tell me that there was a bear spotted up the street to, um, you know, watching our house when we were away, getting our mail, just a number of things. They are the perfect neighbors. I would dare say they probably have been better neighbors to us than we have been, um, to them and also watching this commitment. Also want to mention, which I'm surprised they didn't mention, um, about, uh, the, the, the commitment to the, the, the greenery. They just planted a tree, um, on my side towards, um, my lot. So I'm surprised they didn't mention that. I don't have and, and, and profess to know, I am an attorney, to, to profess to know all of the, the ins and outs of the variance that they're seeking. But I was given an opportunity to review the plans. Absolutely sorry that we weren't able to make the meeting, um, last time. But, um, I, I want to say just in terms of the look, you know, you definitely, right, you can have, um, uh, or you can talk about, you know, the actual numbers of the variances they're, they're seeking and whether or not that is absolutely, um, a variance, but it seems rather small. But certainly, um, I heard their attorney speak about the look of it, right? And whether or not you're even going to get a sense of the variance from the street, which I drive down every day. And I can't imagine, um, that, that you work. Now, I, I respect the law, understand a notion of a variance and that was something was set in place and set in motion many, many years ago. But things change and I don't think that they're asking for anything that is, um, out of bounds. They're not those kinds of neighbors. Um, and they've clearly already made some adjustments to satisfy the board. So I strongly support, um, the application for the variance. Um, and the, the other thing I want to say was about the, this notion of light and air and space. Nothing in those plans will undermine light, air and space on this street, especially in their, um, house and their yard, which is probably, like I said, they've just planted a tree, but it's actually one of the more open houses, um, on this street. Um, lots of sunshine, lots of li- light. As a matter of fact, when I saw the tree, I worried about the light that I was going to get in my house, but it's beautiful, uh, sapling. And so we're absolutely happy with them. Perfect neighbors and I would hate to lose them, um, um, because, or their family, their children, their parents, because they've really added a lot to this block in particular, but also the neighborhood and the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Uh, next up, it's like Kiran B. Please turn on your mic and your camera to be sworn in.
Do you just raise your right hand, please? Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom here to be truthful, true, done by the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name, spell your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm Kiran Batula, uh, K I R A N, Batula, B A T H U A, I live at eighty seven Great Hills Road. I'm a home builder myself currently. I'm building a house in Short Hills. I'm living in the house in Short Hills. And, uh, I know.
Yeah, I suppose.
Wait, wait.
I wish I would have gotten. I'm still on.
Ms. Jones, could you please mute yourself? Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
All right. So, I saw Praveen and, uh, Shweta had the firsthand information how much they worked actually since last one year to conform to whatever the requirements, you know, because of their lot size, you know, even had their discussions. Why can't they move to another place or anything, but they love Short Hills and they love their road. They, they love their neighbors. They have the, you know, like, they are very much, they are, they have very much high affinity towards that neighborhood and they would like to stay there. So they did as best as they can to change.
So they did as best as they can to change the plans to conform to the current, what do you call, requirements. As my previous speaker was saying, laws are there, that they're trying to respect it and do the best. But, you know, it's not allowing them to be 100% conformity. So I think, you know, they should be given a chance for the variance. They should be, they should give, the variance should be approved for them because they would be an asset for this town and for their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Deepa Penobarthy.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear from testimony about to give tonight's Zoom hearing, be truthful, true done by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, spelling your name, please.
Deepa Penobarthy, D E E P A, P as in Peter, E and U, P as in boy, A R T H I, 487 Long Hill Drive. Yeah, I would really like to echo what Jacqueline and, you know, said about them as neighbors, but I live a little bit further away on Long Hill Drive closer to White Oak Ridge Road. There's two houses built on my own street and we've had conversations with Shweta and Praveen to look at those lots. But I think over the years of knowing them, their heart is set on Canoe Brook Road for their children, for their parents. And I think they really have made a lot of accommodations from their previous meeting to change the plans, to do whatever it takes to stay in that lot. And I think I really respect their commitment to Canoe Brook Road and I wish I was their neighbor and have neighbors like them. But I dearly do respect their affinity and their emotional attachment to the house. That being said, I think as neighbors, that I, I mean, I'm not, we don't live as close, but be it power outages, be it anything, they're the first ones to raise their hand and always open their home for the neighbors and friends that they know. And we would hate to lose them from out of town, but I think they should definitely be, you consider for the variance. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Karthik Palladugu.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear from testimony about to give tonight's Zoom hearing, be truthful, true done by the truth?
Yep, I have from.
Your, your name and address for the record, spelling your name, please.
My name is Karthik Palladugu. It's K A R T H I K, last name Palladugu, P A L A D U G U. I live at 7 Lawrence Drive in Short Hills.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm here to support Shweta and Praveen's candidate, application for a zoning variance. I moved to Short Hills a couple of years back and I met them at a cultural meeting and they were the first ones to welcome me into the neighborhood. And they helped me move into the neighborhood and they were wonderful neighbors for me. One of the reasons why I want to support Shweta and Kundlas candidacy is their commitment to the neighborhood. When they went through the previous application a couple of, a month back and they had all these issues, I saw their commitment to work based on the comments that the zoning board provide and try to accommodate as much as possible. And that serves their commitment to stay in their current place and build on top of their house and be a good neighbor as to their, be a good neighbors over there. I also see their commitment to accommodate the neighbors needs. If you look at some of the sites where side backs, setbacks and some of the variances, I actually see that this house is a much better house than the currently have. If you look at the variances that the current house has and the non-conformity it actually has, this one comes out, conforms much better than what it actually has. I've seen one of the previous speakers talk about the laws that are governing the zoning board. And we all want to conform to the zoning board laws. But if you look at their candidacy, they're actually doing much better than what the current, the current house provides. They're moving it a little bit side, from the side a little bit, offering their neighbor much more space, much more breathing room. And this is what a neighbor would actually want with respect to more breathing space. I see their commitment to the neighborhood. I see their commitment to actually stay over there so that they can be better neighbors. I see their commitment so that their kids can grow up in the neighborhood where they're actually staying for eight years. And I want you to look into the lens of what the current house is and what they're actually building in the future and how the current house is a much better version of what the previous house offers to the neighbors and also to the community. And I want you to take the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Manish Bandari.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear from the testimony about to give tonight's Zoom hearing, be truthful, true done by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Name and address, spelling your name for the record, please.
Yeah, Manish Bandari, M A N I S H, and last name B H A N D A R I. I live at 21 Wordsworth Road.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so two broad comments right from the discussion to me. Look, I think it was clear to me, the lots, the shape of the lot that Praveen and Shweta have is clearly unique and very different from, from the neighborhood. And, and to me, while the zoning laws and the ratios and the rules make broad sense, right, that's the overall framework. You know, as you think about the specific lot in question, I think there is probably a reason for them to ask for the variance. And I think that's why this process exists for exceptions like this. If there, and I do believe the hardship is real here in terms of the shape of the lot. And I appreciate the changes that Praveen and Shweta are making post the prior feedback. So I'm supportive of the variance. I'm supportive of the, the, the look of the house, which I think is, will only, will only make the neighborhood better and, and bring, and bring more diversity in terms of design, which is, which is critically important as, as the neighbor attracts, attracts new buyers over a period of time. So I'm very supportive of that. Besides that, Praveen and Shweta, I've, you know, I've known them as strong stewards of the community. And, and I appreciate the commitment to the neighborhood and they've been, they've been great neighbors to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Brian Nelson. Mr. Nelson, if you could turn on your camera, please, to be sworn in as well as unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Brian Nelson.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear from the testimony about to give tonight's Zoom hearing, be truthful, true done by the truth?
Yes, I do.
Just please state your name, spell your name and your address for the record.
Yes, Brian Nelson, B R I A N, N I E L S O N, 45 Wordsworth Road, Short Hills, New Jersey. Thank you. I'm going to echo kind of what everyone says. I support the Kundulas variance. They're great neighbors. We've known them for four years. Our kids went to school together, so we'll go to school together. I agree with what Manisha stated about the design of the home. How things are starting to, how the neighborhoods are starting to kind of grow and diversity of different types of homes, different looks of homes. So I think that's very, very important. I also think that the design and the, and the variance also, the overall home will fit the odd shaped lot better. I think, I think it's much more efficient of the space. I agree with everything what, what people say. When I, when I run by their house every day, I see all the foliage, just all the trees. You know, the great neighbors, beautiful home. I don't think that they're going to do anything to, you know, to harm that. And I'm in full, I'm in full support of the home and of them. So I have to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we just? One more. Could you please turn your camera on, unmute yourself and be sworn in? Kanika.
Please just raise your right hand, your right hand. You swear from testimony about to give tonight's Zoom hearing, be truthful, true done by the truth? I cannot hear you.
We do.
I don't hear them.
Sorry, we have no audio on you. That sounds better. Got it.
A little bit better.
It's very low, though.
Uh, sorry, we're just trying. I don't know. We got disconnected and connected. Yes, we do. Do you hear us?
You're very low. If you can keep your voice up as loud as you can, we should be all right. There you go.
Okay.
Wait, 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 wait.
Hold on.
State, state your, your names, spell your names and your address for the record.
Sumit Chabra, S U M I T, C H H A B R A. Address is 56 Browning Road in Short Hills.
You're going to have to speak up because it's very hard to hear you.
56 Browning Road in Short Hills.
Thank you. Go ahead. And did your wife's name? Did you get that?
Kanika, K A N I K A. My last name, Verma, V E R M A.
Okay, go ahead.
So we are, our house actually faces or on the, on the backyard from Praveen and Shweta's house. So we can almost see their house from our backyard. We have known Praveen and Shweta for many years now. Our kids go to the same class. We, you know, we see them often.
You really have to speak up because it's very difficult to hear you.
So I think as everybody reiterated, like we just basically reiterated what everyone has mentioned before. I think, you know, Praveen and Shweta, we have known them for a long time. They are good stewards in the community. They have, you know, they're both physicians, very well respected. And I think just looking at and having been to their homes before, we can, we can attest to the hardship in terms of the lot size and how, how the lot is, how the lot is and why we totally understand why they would need a variance to build something that suits their needs. And especially with, you know, them having a family where the parents as well come quite often. So we are totally supportive of the variance. And I don't know, Kanika, if you want to add something. I echo what everybody else was saying. We have personally known them and their family for about six years. We moved into the town in 2013. So I have known Shweta since we have, like, I have my, my son and their twins are in the same grade. They have, they have a lot of playdates together. I echo what everybody else said. I think the addition, the variance is dependent on the shape of the lot. Given the shape of the lot, they are bound to get into that kind of a variance permission, which should be granted because they are building it for the family. They're building it just for the usability of the house. So I, I support their variance.
Thank you very much. It looks like we have finally ended with the public commentary, I think. No other hands raised, correct, finally? So with that, I will close the public portion of the meeting. Is there any comment from board members?
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm going to suggest that before you open it up to board members, I think the applicants possibly may have wanted to respond to one or more of the comments made by members of the public and they should be provided an opportunity to do so if they wish.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Would you, do you have any comment regarding the comments?
No, not really. We just want to make, ensure that we will, we are, we'll always be very, very committed to the neighbors and the neighborhood. And whatever we do is only hopefully going to enhance the neighborhood, not take it away from it. As people who are going to build a house on the same lot, we, which we are going to live unlike a builder, we are going to take an extra care to ensure that not only we enjoy the neighborhood, but everybody continues to enjoy the neighborhood. We are committed for that and we want to assure the board and the panel that, that is our true intent. We do not have any other intent to spoil the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I just, if I could just respond to Mr. Waters' concerns about the established front yard setback. And, you know, I don't know if he was on the previous meeting, but I had shown that there is such a discrepancy in the established setbacks. They vary up to 28 feet. So there really is no consistency. I think bringing our house in conformance with the house to the right gives more consistency. And I think, you know, it's not a detriment in requesting the small degree of variance really for the front yard setback.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. So I will close the public portion of this, this hearing. Board members, what say you?
I'll, I'll start off. I was not in favor of this application at the last meeting, but it seems that the architect and the applicants have really taken part what we as a board have said and some of our concerns, as well as some concerns of the, for members of the public. And I'm happy to see the changes that they made. And I, I could support this application. I think, you know, the one thing that I would add is the, you know, the, the optional balcony. I see where our chairman has, you know, where he was coming from when he was asking that question, if it could be removed. And I would be in favor of them removing it or stipulating that it, that it wouldn't go in. But, you know, I don't know that that would be a deal breaker for me, one way or the other. So I'm curious what my fellow board members have to say.
Happy to go in here. Look, I think clearly Praveen and Shweta have taken a lot of steps here with Mr. Miller to come up with the changes. And I think it, it certainly addresses many of the concerns, if not all, that were raised on the last call. I think the hardship that they face with the, with the lot, I think they have done well in terms of, you know, trying to conform to it. They, as, as I heard, and I think it is probably true that the current home is more non-conforming to what their proposed home will be, which actually means that they are enhancing the, I'm conforming more to what the existing rules are. So I think that, that's a great, very honorable in terms of, you know, the step that they're taking. As far as the other changes that they had in terms of the, the driveway, I think the circular driveway looks good. And I think that was important. I raised that on the last call as well, that having that long of a driveway to back out for 100 plus feet is, is not safe for the neighborhood, given the narrow street. I live on Canoe Brook, so I know how narrow it is on that side of the road. So I think that's a very good change. And in terms of the, the side, the optional balcony, I, I think I have a different view to what has been raised here. What I heard Mr. Miller say is that when you see it from either of the neighbors' homes, and I certainly like to hear, you know, others' views as well, that they are actually inconformity from, when you look at it from the neighbor's home. And given the, the breadth of the plot it is in the front yard, you will see that it is very open. This home is not kind of congested because of its 100 plus feet broad at the very front. So it is a very open front yard. Plus, if you see it from the side, from each of the neighbor's homes, if there is no such closeness in terms of where the lots are, I would be okay with having that optional balcony, provided we have some, you know, screening required. If, if that's what, you know, you know, helps alleviate that concern. So given that, that side yard setback still stays, and if there is enough distance, that would be my vote here. Fully supportive of this and appreciate you guys taking the effort. You guys have been great neighbors. We've been, you know, we've known each other, you know, so, so clearly very, I have similar sentiment in terms of what was raised on the call from all the neighborhood residents. I'll stop there.
Keith?
Yeah, so I'm in support of the application. I do want to thank the applicant and the architect for being so responsive to the comments that we made during our, our last meeting. It's very much appreciated. And I am candidly, I'm really fine with the balcony. It's not something we have purview over anyway. And so I would not necessarily need to make that a condition of approval.
Anyone else have any comments? Anyone else have any comments?
I'll just keep mine short and I'll just say that I echo what Steve just said. I, I think there's clearly a hardship created by the, um, by the shape of the property. And, um, I think the Candillas have done a, uh, and their architect are going to have done a good job to try to take in all of the considerations that were raised previously. So I'm in support of this as well.
I just had my comments here that I, I think, uh, the, from the last time, there have been changes made by the architect and the Candillas. So I'll be supportive of the application.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of comments. We have a lot requirement of fourteen thousand five hundred square feet with an existing lot of twenty thousand five hundred thirty-six square feet, approximately thirty percent larger than the zone requires. We have a lot width of four, one hundred thirty-seven feet when required is seventy-five, forty-six percent larger than the zone requires. We have a lot depth, two hundred and five feet, required is a hundred twenty-five, forty percent larger than the zone requires. So I frankly don't see this as a C-one variance. Um, I'm, I'm, to argue setback on a lot this size as a hardship is difficult. Um, the C-two is sort of where it comes in for me, where I look at this as can the lot accommodate the massing? And I would say that it could. Um, I'm not sure about the screening. Is this a second floor balcony? As large trees, no matter how big you plant them, it's going to be hard to screen a second floor balcony. So we often talk about this board and talk about privacy. We ask things like how far is the neighbor's house from you and so on and so forth. So privacy is, is clearly an important part. And I think having a balcony that's on the second floor is a non-starter for me. So in that case, um, I would support this application with that condition. Anyone who would like to make a motion?
So, so just so we're clear, uh, Mr. Chairman, the emotion, um, that someone would make would presumably, based on the comments, uh, be to approve. The question is whether you're approving under the C-one, a hardship variance criteria, under the C-two, or what's called the flexible C-two, where the benefits are found to substantially outweigh the detriments and that the application provides a better zoning alternative for the property, or under both.
Personally, for me, it's C-two, but you can obviously justify a C-one also.
Yeah, well, that's why I.
Yeah, so I don't see a C-one hardship personally, so. We have a lot that's the same size as the zone, so.
And, and Mr. Simon, if you could just summarize what would be the difference in the C-one versus C-two?
In, in terms of the differences between the two?
The approval?
Well, yeah, sure. So, so the C, so the C-one that we've talked about, uh, many times over the years is what's called technically a hardship variance. Um, and that goes to whether you find that by reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of the, the property or other topographical conditions or physi- physical features uniquely affecting, uh, the property. Um, here, uh, and sometimes we actually talk about the structures lawfully existing on the property, but here, uh, they're basically creating a, a new home. So, um, that's what is the C-one or a hardship variance due to the conditions specifically relating to the property. Under the C-two, uh, which is the, what's called the benefits versus the detriments, uh, variance, you find that the purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by deviation from zoning ordinance requirements and that the benefits of the deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements would substantially outweigh any detriment. In other words, um, under what's called Kaufman case, whether this application provides a, a better zoning alternative for the property, um, or in other words, improved zoning and planning that's going to benefit the community. So those are the differences between the C-one, which goes to the land itself essentially, or the structures on the land, and the C-two, which I stated, the, the benefits outweighing the detriments.
Thank you.
Wolfgang, you have a comment?
No, I was just with respect to C-one versus C-two, and I do acknowledge that it's an oversized, it's, it's a large lot, that, that, to be sure. But when you look at where the required setbacks are, given the shape of this lot and the way it narrows as it goes back, it does, it does present challenges. I think it really does present challenges to, to anyone trying to, you know, to build on this particular lot. So I would actually be in supportive and in support of the C-one variance in this instance.
I, I would like to say that I agree with that statement. This, this, this meets each of the side yard setbacks, but not the combined yard setback. And I, I, I think it's, the, the reason for that is because of the shape of the lot. So if this were a less irregularly shaped lot, I don't think they would have the combined side yard setback issue that they have. And it also narrows to the rear, which creates, you know, part of the issue about where the house is situated on the lot. So I, I agree with Wolfgang, actually. I, I think it's a C-one variance.
And, and I would love.
The question remains, are we going to have the condition, right? That, I think the focus maybe, we want to focus on whether or not we're going to have the balcony as a condition of, uh, exclusion of the balcony as a condition of the approval, right? That's kind of the key.
Okay, well, that's a fair, go ahead. Sorry, Jessica.
Oh, no, I, no, I was going to say that I thought that, um, our attorney said that, you know, one of the things that we should be discussing is, you know, what, 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 what it's satisfying. I, I think personally, I agree with, um, Amy and Wolfgang that I think it satisfies the C-one. I also think it satisfies the C-two.
Yeah, I, I think the other thing that satisfies C-one, as I see it, is that, as they mentioned, that this could be a property built sixty-four percent or sixty-plus percent more than what it is being built. So they are taking that hardship to make it a smaller size in order to conform with the odd-shaped lot. I think that's the way I would see it as a C-one, uh, more than clearly a C-two. It, it does exist, but there is a C-one element here as well.
Do I have a motion?
So I move approval of the application as it's, as, as it's been revised and submitted.
Pursuant to C-one, C-two, or both?
Uh, I would say pursuant to C-one.
Second.
I'll leave.
You're mute, I mean.
Yeah. Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jean-Ju Harjani?
Yes.
Jessica Glat?
Yes.
Craig Platter?
Yes.
All right.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Moving on, next we have, uh, let's hear, we have calendar thirty-eight, forty-two, twenty-one, David and Barry Lebowitz of thirty-eight Quaker Road.
Good evening, everyone.
Hold on a second.
You need to be sworn in, so.
You have to be sworn in. If you look frozen, can you hear us?
They're, 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 um, professionals coming on.
Yeah, they're professionals.
Do you have an, an architect? Do you have anyone appearing with you?
Yes, he, he should on, um, his name is Daniel Roma.
Mr. Roma, could you unmute yourself and turn your camera on, please?
Okay, if you all would just raise your right hands, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing, be the truth, hold true, tell them about the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you would just state your names one at a time and your address, please.
My name is Daniel Angel Roma. I'm the licensed architect for Artic Studio LLC, located at eight seven seven Broad Street, Newark, New Jersey.
On the Lebowitz's, please.
Hi, Barry Lebowitz, thirty-eight Quaker Road, Short Hills, Jersey.
My name is David Lebowitz, thirty-eighth Quaker Road, Short Hills, New Jersey.
Thank you. Mr. Roma, would you please indulge the board of their qualifications?
Yes, I have a bachelor's degree in architecture from the University of Buenos Aires, Argentina. I came to this country in nineteen eighty-five and since then I've been involved in the field of architecture. First as a draftman, a general contractor, and since two thousand and six, I became a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and New York. Um, I've been in front of many, uh, cities like Newark, Elizabeth, Carney, uh, but this is my first time in Melbourne.
Is your license?
My license is current.
Thank you very much. Your qualifications are accepted.
Thank you.
Um, who would like to speak first?
Sure.
Mr. Roma, Lebowitz family?
Sure, sure. I'm David Lebowitz. Um, just, uh, you know, first, um, you know, thanks for having us. We're glad we're on the agenda. It's been a while and so it's been a, a, a self-education process to navigate this and we're excited to, uh, be here. Uh, congratulations to members and the new appointments to the zoning board. Um, you know, just in effort to humanize this first, you know, Barry and I moved to Short Hills, July of two thousand and eight. We're in our first home and we're, you know, keen on staying here and improving it and, um, raising our family here. You know, we've been a resident now for, you know, twelve, thirteen years, depending on the math. We have two children in the Hartshorn School system, um, and middle school. Yes, they're, she's growing, you know, love the neighborhood. Um, you know, talk about community. I've served on the Board of Education from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen. Um, I'm a small business in town. I'm an advisor with an office in Short Hills on, uh, Ross Turnpike. So, you know, like probably many applicants as well as yourselves, we are also committed to the community, want to better ourselves and, you know, uh, better the, you know, uh, community. Um, I know Barry has, um, wants to speak as well.
Sure. Um, so, um, when we received, um, need to apply for a variance, we did engage Casey Keller, um, and we are working with Rich. Unfortunately, he is out of town, um, but with the guidance of him and, uh, Lane Davitt, um, they said this was a pretty straightforward variance. So since time is of essence, um, we are, um, doing this ourselves with our architect, um, on Rich's behalf, but I just wanted to let you guys know that as well. Um, you know, the purpose of our variance is to better our home. Um, we, um, need to make our kitchen functionable. Um, with the, uh, stress of COVID, needs for additional workspace and, um, office space and study space has really, um, been very important to our family and become a need. Um, our extension is, the sole purpose is to extend our kitchen, um, and then to create an, uh, an office for David and I to work out of, um, as well as our children. Um, you know, I took pictures, if I could share the screen of the kitchen, just to show you currently what it does look like. Um, if you just bear with me because I'm trying to navigate this. Hold on. Um, tell me you see this. Um, hold on, sorry. Okay, so this is our kitchen, um.
Wait, wait, hold on a second.
It's not.
Hold on. This, this Lebowitz, are you, are you going to be showing a series of photos?
Pro. I'm just showing this, this one or two, one other one, so you understand what.
Yeah, no, that, that, that's fine. I just want to get an idea of how many photos you're intending to show in total. Because we need to mark them for identification for the record for the hearing.
I, sure, I just took two. I thought it'd be benefits so you could just see a visual.
Sure, so we're gonna, so we're gonna mark, uh, this one and the next one as a series of two photographs. We're gonna mark that as a one for identification. Did you take the two photographs?
I did.
And when did you take them?
Yesterday, earlier today.
Okay.
On my iPhone, just so you understand what's going on. I just wanted to give you all of the purpose of the extension.
That's fine. So, so why don't you, why don't you go one by one and show us what they, uh, are intended to show?
Sure. The, the purpose of the photos was really to show that we don't have an eating kitchen, right? And so you kind of just, we have this kind of dated, you know, uh, kitchen space, you know, our house is circa, uh, nineteen fifty-two. It's a two thousand square foot, you know, footprint, and we're looking to do, um, you know, a two hundred and seventy-seven square foot, you know, bump out on the exterior, which would actually then afford us the opportunity to make our kitchen an eating kitchen with an island and a, and a bench or something, you know, and make it more of a, you know, a workspace and more of a, you know, just, just more space, you know, which has come apparent during COVID, as well as just, we're outgrowing our current space and we're not moving. And so we just want to, you know, this is what we've given thought to and planned like the last two years. So the purpose of these two photos, just to bring it back, is really just to show it's not an eating kitchen space we eat in our dining room. That's the purpose.
Right.
Okay.
That's, that's basically it. There's no other photo. It's just giving you a visual.
Right, just so you can see.
So you understand, right? Okay.
You can't, you can't speak one at a time. You can't both speak at the same time.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, would you like to have Mr. Roma speak and, um, discuss your plan?
So, um, yeah, the, um, just one other, just one other point. So I guess the variance we are, we need is the one, because we, we don't meet the requirements just on the side yard setback. Um, we also have a very irregular lot, um, which has caused, um, an issue for our dwelling to better our house. Um, we're just looking to better our house and better the community. Um, our kids walk to school. Um, we love it here and we're not looking to go anywhere else. Um, and this irregular shape has caused, um, the need for variance, and, and that's the whole purpose why we're here today.
Talk you through it if we want, or.
I mean, Dan could talk you through it. I, whatever you need. Daniel?
I don't know.
Okay. Let me share my drawings.
Right.
Can you see?
No, Mr. Roma, they're not coming up. We do have copies. If you would like to refer to them in the hard copy.
Or Barry, you want to talk?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. There you go.
Once it, can you see now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, this is the, um, the site plan, uh, plot plan of the, of the house on the lot. As you can see, the lot, uh, is not the square lot, um, it's a regular one. Uh, this is the existing house. The existing house is, uh, fifty-six feet, uh, four inches by twenty-four feet. Uh, what we want to do is we want to create an addition uh, in the back. Uh, the addition will be eighteen feet by eighteen feet, uh, with a, uh, with a patio. Let me go, uh, the, the variance, the only variance that we're going to have is a combined, uh, side yard variance. Um, we have, uh, to the, to the right, a nineteen point fifty-eight feet, and existing, uh, to the left, twenty-five point sixty-six feet. Uh, what we're proposing is to modify the, the side yard, uh, on the left side, uh, to go to thirteen point fifty-eight feet. Uh, that will give us a variance, uh, because they require a side yard combined is a thirty-five percent and this, uh, will be, uh, twenty-eight point one percent. We are short by six point nine percent. That is equal to eight feet. Um, let me show you the, what we're doing.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting. Is it, is it six point oh-nine or eight point oh-nine? Because according to the application, it says the deviation is eight point oh-nine feet.
Yes, eight point zero nine feet, uh, that is equal to six point nine percent.
Got it. Thank you.
Um, let me go to the floor plan. Okay, this is page two and here you're going to see what we are proposing. This is the, the first floor of the house. You can mean, you have a small dining area to the left, dining room to the right. You keep going back and here is where we create a, a new kitchen with an island. The island is four by, by eight approximately. And what we did is we create this addition to the back of the house that give us a space for a nice dining area, TV room, and this will be connected to the, to the backyard through a double sliding door to the, to the back of the property. The addition again is 18 by 18 and we are removing the, the existing wall to have an open concept with a, with a kitchen and this area is going to be used for, for the family. The other thing that we create is on the second floor, the, my client wants to enlarge the master bedroom. When you go to the second floor from the stairs, you will have four bedrooms and the master bedroom to the left. What we are creating is a corridor between what it is right now, a walk-in closet. We're removing that and create a corridor to get to the, to the back. We are going to have a walk-in closet and an office space. The office space is seven feet, four inches by 14 feet approximately and the walk-in closet is 10 feet by, by nine feet. This is what we're proposing. The, the idea is this will be a two-story addition. The two-story addition, the, the first floor will be 11 feet high with a tray ceiling to, to get an idea of a bigger space. And the second floor where is the walk-in closet and the office space to use for the couple is eight feet. These meet the requirements of height on, on the car. Then I'm going to show you some pictures that I took. These, you don't have it. These are pictures that were taken by me on December 14, 2020, when we started with this idea of doing.
Okay, so, so hold on a second. Why don't we mark, is this just one sheet that you're going to show?
Yes.
All right, so this is going to be a photo board and we're going to mark this, we're going to mark this as A2.
Okay.
Okay, and what's, do you have a date on this?
Um, yes, these, the, the day on, let me see, one second, please.
It's December.
December 4th.
As the date, we didn't change it, said March 24, 2008, 2021.
Okay, and, and you took these photos yourself?
Yes, I took these pictures around two years.
Around that time?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, this, let me show you the, the last picture. This is the, the front facade of the house. This is a view for the left. This is the two-car garage that is to the left of the house. And where is this tree is where we are going to add our addition. You're going to see here from the back. This is the, the area where we are adding, we're removing this wall. Around 12 feet of this wall is going to be removed to have a connection between the kitchen and the dining area with a TV. And this is going to be a two-story addition. I have here this picture that I took it from Google Maps to, to give you an idea more or less how far we are from the neighbors. Right now it's around 74 feet, four inches from, from the neighbor that is behind the house. The, I think that you have a picture, let me show that. Can you see this picture?
Yes, is it, is this part of your photo board or is this additional photograph?
No, this is a picture that I think that my client presented with the application. This is another picture that was taken on, on Google. And this is just to show you that between my client and the neighbor that is to the left, there is a line of trees that are approximately between 35 to 40 feet high that will cover the, the new addition that we're proposing. Remember that?
Why don't, why don't we mark this as A3? Because I don't see this in the packet. And we're going to call it Google Photos showing adjacent property. And do you have a date on this?
Um, no, I don't have a date here. Since 2013.
All right, so why don't we just say August 2013?
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay, um.
And Mr. Roma, we're just going to ask that when you're done with the presentation, all exhibits should be submitted to Ms. Davit.
Okay, no, thank you. All right, this is basically our application. Let me show you the elevations. The, the house right now has cedar clapboard shingles on the siding with a new addition. We're going to use the same material, painting the same color white. And this is the front elevation. This is the front elevation of the addition and you can see here that it's going to be seen part of the addition. This is the left side elevation. This is the right side elevation with a double sliding doors that are going to have access to the, to the backyard and the patio area. And this is the the back, the back elevation. This is my presentation. You have any questions?
Any questions of board members for either Mr. Roma or the Leibowitzes? Mr. Roma, could you stop showing your screen for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
I have a question of the architect. So, am I understanding it correctly? The addition is going to be higher than the current roofline?
Yes, will be a little higher, but still under the, the height limitations.
How, how much, what's, what's the differential?
The existing house, the height of the house is 22 feet, six inches and the, the addition will be 26 feet. It's a difference of three feet and a half. A little higher because we want to create the, the first floor height of 11 feet.
So the second floor, just to be clear, the second floor addition is higher than the existing roofline because of the height of the first floor ceiling?
That's correct.
Okay.
You mean the first floor ceiling in the new addition, not the first floor ceiling in the existing house, correct?
That's correct. The new addition will be 11 feet.
And that's purely an aesthetic, right? There's no requirement for that?
No, it's just.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions of the architect or applicant? Anyone in the audience with a question for either the architect or the applicants? I do not see any. Any comments regarding this?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have one more question.
Go ahead, Steve.
So the, the variance that's being required, that's being requested, it doesn't have anything to do with the height of the addition, correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
And if the, and if the height of the addition was the same as the existing, you would still need the same variance?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments regarding this from the audience? Uh, we have one hand raised. Oh. Okay, could you raise your hand and Eric will swear in.
Do you swear a firm testimony about to give in tonight's soon hearing? Do you tell truth about the truth?
I do.
We state your name and address for the record.
Catherine Roberts. I live at 34 Quaker Road, Short Hills. I just wanted to speak out in support of the Leibowitz's application. I am their next door neighbor, have been for over 10 years and they're wonderful neighbors, wonderful people, an asset to the neighborhood and their improvement. I see as an improvement to their house and their lot and the street. And I just wanted to voice my support for their application.
Thank you so much for your comments. Anyone else in the audience have a comment regarding this application? I do not see any, so I will close this hearing to the public. Members, what say you?
Well, I'll go first, I guess. I, I apologize for the clarinet lesson going on behind me.
I think Steve has piano going on behind him, so.
Yeah, I do.
I, from, from my perspective, this, this seems like a very similar case to the one we saw last time, we, we just saw, sorry, where, you know, this meets the side yard setback requirements, but not the combined side yard because of the shape of the lot. And so I, I feel like, you know, there is a hardship created by the shape of the lot. And, you know, I'm, I'm in support of this. I don't, I don't take issue with, with what the applicant is trying to achieve here.
Thank you. Anyone other comments?
I, I would echo that comment. I think it's a very similar case and as Amy pointed out, it is a hardship given the shape of the lot. And I could be supportive as well.
Thank you, John Drew. Steve?
I, I'm really uncomfortable with the mismatching rooflines. I know it's, I mean, it looks like it was just like a square box is being nailed to the side of this house. The aesthetically, it's, I think that there could be much more creative ways that the lines could be brought together. But, you know, generally speaking though, the, the, the variance, I can appreciate the need for the variance, but I'm particularly uncomfortable with the design of the roofline.
Any other comments?
I, I would echo what Mr. Togge just said, especially since this will be visible from the front. I mean,
No.
This is, it is going to be part of this, the, the streetscape, so to speak. And, yeah, I'm, I'm also not comfortable with that.
Any other comments?
Um, I'll, I'll just say that I, I absolutely think that there is a hardship here with the shape of the property. I also think that the, you know, the, the lot can handle the addition. I, I understand what my fellow board members, Stephen Wolfgang, are saying about the addition and I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way that perhaps by bringing the first floor down by a foot or two, you know, if that could maybe satisfy the members of our board who, you know, have some concerns over the way that the addition will look aesthetically from the outside. But, but generally I, you know, I'm in favor of the application. You know, I understand the need to modernize a house to make it more livable for, you know, a modern family.
Mr. Roma, you hear some concerns here?
Yes, um. What we try to do is try to do the, the new addition separate from the lines of the existing house. But I, I see the concern, we can, we would like to have a little higher anyway. Right now is 11 feet. Maybe we can reduce by, by a foot or two feet and I get the nine feet first floor.
Can I, can I say something?
Sure.
Sure. Um, you know, I know that Rich Keller did do analysis for the board for this. I think this was brought up to his attention and he definitely did a height analysis of which we definitely passed. I know from an aesthetic, yeah, I think he, he, I think he sent it in with Eileen. If it's from an aesthetic standpoint, our house is a 1950s home and it's seven and a half, seven and a half foot ceilings. We're not big people. We, we need the additional space. I know it sounds, you know, I, when I originally saw the plan, I felt the same thing and after, you know, seeing it and, and, you know, sitting on it and looking at it from different standpoints, I, I actually think it, it does conform with our house and our roofline and, and we really could use that extra foot. I know it sounds like not that big of a deal, but one and a half feet and I know seven and a half foot ceiling height is a big difference for our home, so. Just wanted to voice that opinion, but I do know we meet the height requirements because that was definitely taken into consideration.
No, you do. I will remind the board, we're here to make a decision on minimum, minimum side yard setback. I realize that we can make comments regarding the streetscape, but that's what we're here to vote on this evening. So, that being said, is there a motion in this case?
I'll move approval.
Joe? I'm sorry, you'll second the motion. Thank you. Eileen?
Amy Lawrence? Yes. Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Togge?
No.
Wolfgang de Torres?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Craig Clotner?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You so much.
Decided. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you.
Nice job, Dan.
Uh, moving along to calendar 384321, Alice Allison and Stephen Bitterman of 20 Hawthorne Road. I think. Who's the architect? Danny?
I think so.
Okay, Eileen, this is the one I'm, I'm not. Yes. I'll turn my camera off, I guess.
Sure.
Okay.
Is anybody else coming over?
It should be Danny. He was here.
Yes.
Folks, could you turn your cameras and your microphones, please, to be sworn in?
Coming. Camera. Great, technical, give me one second, sorry.
Does your camera work? Dave, can you get your camera to work?
I'm trying. Weird. Let's see if it's gonna kick over. Oh, here it is. Start video. Could do that.
There you go.
Thank you. Everyone would just raise their right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to tell you the truth?
I do. I do.
Okay, just state your names and your address for the record, please.
Okay, Daniel Dubinette?
Stephen Bitterman, Twenty Hawthorne Road, Short Hills.
Allison Bitterman, Twenty Hawthorne Road, Short Hills.
Mr. Dubinette, could you please give us your qualifications?
Sure. Licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, licensed in two thousand and one. Practiced primarily residential architecture, appeared before this board and others in Essex County. And license is still good.
Thank you very much. Will you please present your case?
Yes, thank you so much. I'm gonna share a screen. Okay. So our application is, what we'd like to do is add a thirteen by thirteen plus or minus addition to the second floor. So this is a, I'd like to mark it A1. This is four slides. They're drawings that you have in your package, plus some color photographs I took today. And I'd like to mark this A1. So what we're seeing is the, the floor plans and the highlighted area, this is.
Dan, is this, is this dated today?
Yes, well, I'll date it today.
It says dated nine twenty-two, twenty-one.
Yeah, I'll adjust the date. Today is ten twenty-two. Thanks. So what we have, we have a first floor below us. This will be an addition above the first floor. And it's about thirteen, ten, thirteen, three. And what it'll allow us to do will be to add a master bathroom, a modest sized master bathroom and walk-in closet for the home. And so currently the house has four bedrooms, two baths, and will, in the end, will net four bedrooms, two baths. So the variance associated with this application is FAR only. And I'll just take you through. So basically, these elevations, there's no change to the front. To the right side, this is what's existing, this one-story addition. And we'd like to propose this second floor above. And from the rear, it'll look like this, so it'll fill in that missing piece. Again, materials will match existing. And this is a, just an example of the first floor. So this is the piece that we're gonna be adding on top of. So we conform, this is the survey. We conform greatly to the combined side yard setbacks, the side yard setbacks, the rear setback. And again, this is the piece that we're seeking. I quickly studied the neighbor's home, adjacent neighbor home. So they're over twenty-seven and a half feet from our house. And there seems to be a significant amount of open and airspace and some mature screening. The variance that we're seeking, the home has already existing non-conforming for the FAR. So currently, they're at thirty-seven point three percent. They're about a hundred square feet over what's allowed. So to add anything, of course, we would need a variance. We're seeking the numbers, two thousand eight hundred square feet, which is forty percent, thirty-six percent is required. So we're with the existing non-conforming and our added square footage, we're two hundred and eighty square feet over what's allowed. Or eleven point one percent deviation from what's allowed. But what I think that makes this application acceptable is, this is a photograph of the front of the house. And so this is number twenty, and this is the neighbor. And again, there's that twenty-seven and a half feet between the two. It's a one-story addition to the neighbor. But we have a significant amount of very large evergreen trees. So from the front, it'll be hard to see the addition. And then from the rear, this is the rear elevation. And so the dotted lines are what I'm proposing. It'll be very low in statute, the roof lines will be low. And this is a view between the two houses. And so I believe, you know, we talked about FAR and the massing, that this is of course a, a perfect for the mass and that the property can handle it. And then that would certainly be no negative impact to the adjacent neighbor. And it'll allow them to update, modernize their, the second floor, first floor we've done already. And again, it's, you know, the room, the, the room size is, is kind of small. But again, we're seeking the FAR. That's the application.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Dubinette? Any questions from the audience for the applicant or Mr. Dubinette?
One, one quick question?
Go ahead, Steve.
So, yeah, a really, really thoughtful design as, as usual, and it's just tucked right where it's supposed to be. So you, the, the material now, it's like a stucco. Is that what that is on the outside? It's gonna be the same material?
Yes.
Okay.
And a slate roof as well.
And slate roof as well. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I don't see any hands up from the audience, so we will close the public portion and move to. Why is Joe over there? I see Joe in the.
He may have just, I, I don't know what happened.
Okay, I just see him, I see him over in the attendees.
I'm gonna bring him back. I don't know how that happened. Unless he's got lost and signed back on.
Oh, there he is.
He considers himself a man of the people.
You got a question from the other side? So I, so I will close the public portion and we'll open up the comments. I'll go first on this one. You know, having walked around the backyard and seen that pocket up there, it almost looked like there was supposed to be something there. So I, I thought, I thought this is a thoughtful addition. I do realize it is eleven percent deviation, which seems sizable, but two hundred and eighty square feet. So, you know, you sort of get lost in the, in the percentage over actually what the square footage is. It's not, not a massive addition in terms of the size. And there is quite a bit of distance between that and the neighbor's house. And this house seems to be set back a little bit further from the neighbor's house anyway. So the, even the, the windows will not be really invasive to the neighbor's, neighbor's property. So I would support this application. So I'm, I'm interested in hearing if anyone else has any other comments regarding it.
The only comment I have is that I've got to recuse.
We saw you disappear there for a minute.
Yeah, I don't know what happened.
Mr. Dubinette, just, just for your edification, if with Mr. Steinberg recusing and Ms. Lawrence recusing, if you just remind your clients or just explain to your clients that because of the nature of the FAR variance that's required for this application, it requires five affirmative votes, which would, based on, I think the math at this point would require you to go five for five.
So in light of that comment, I would appreciate all board members to voice their opinion.
I'm in support of the application.
We actually have six voting because I'll have Sean Drew.
Okay.
I think I would be supportive of this application.
Likewise, I think the distance between the two homes doesn't seem to be too, too close. So I, I would go with that view as well. I would be supportive as well.
Thank you, John Drew.
I, I agree with Craig's comments that I wouldn't, I wouldn't get caught up in the actual percentage. This is a small and thoughtful addition. I completely agree with Craig that when I went to the backyard, it looks like it's meant to be there. And I think it, you know, absolutely satisfies the, you know, criteria needed to grant a variance for FAR.
Wolfgang?
I also agree, having visited the property, the percentage deviation really doesn't, it doesn't have that impact visually at all. It doesn't seem to have any impact on the neighbors, the houses, neighboring houses are not located such that they would be, that there would be an issue. And I could support this application.
Mr. Dubinette, you comfortable moving forward to vote?
Yes, please.
Could I have a motion in this case?
Move approval.
In a second.
A second.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togge?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Sean Drew Hargani?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph Stein, I'm sorry, Craig Clotner?
Yes. Congratulations and good luck with the project.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks very much.
Moving forward to the last case of the evening, calendar thirty-eight, forty-six, twenty-one, Alexei Gaskovich, eighty-six Locust Avenue in Melbourne. And I believe Wolfgang, you are recusing, correct?
Yes, correct.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
So Wolfgang is recusing. Okay, so Alexei, do you have anyone appearing with you or it's just you?
Just me.
Okay, if you would just raise your right hand then. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's hearing to tell you the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record.
Alexei Gaskovich, eighty-six Locust Avenue, Melbourne.
Hey.
Thank you.
Gaskovich, feel free to proceed.
Yeah, we're just applying for a variance for, it's a four-foot extension to a bedroom up on the second floor, as well as a portico over the front steps. The extension in the front of the house doesn't extend further than the existing front of the house. And everything else pretty much stays the same as far as the facade.
Okay, so. The attachment here. So you're looking for a five-foot, basically five point four two foot front yard setback variance, correct?
Correct.
Any questions from anyone here? Rob, do you need more content?
Well, just, just a couple of questions for the applicant. So in the application package, it states that the entire house doesn't meet the current front yard setback. If you can just elaborate on that a bit.
So the front of the house.
So it's a pre-existing non-conforming?
Yes, correct. So the whole, the whole, I can share a screen. Can you guys see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it shows the side elevation here. This is here, the existing second floor, front. And this is the front of the actual house on the first floor. So the new addition comes out and still behind the first, further back, set further back to the front of the first floor house.
How far is the house currently from the existing? It's thirty point four feet.
Yeah, thirty point four feet.
So it's currently not conforming as it stands, correct?
Correct.
And how close is the second floor addition to the street?
Thirty. Thirty-four point five to eight feet from the street.
And the minimum front yard setback is forty feet?
Correct.
Their application is for five point four two feet. So I'm assuming that's because the front porch, correct? Not the second floor. It's getting close as.
Correct.
Increasing that.
Correct.
And did you say that you were adding the, on the first floor, you were adding to the, the bedroom? Is that, is that what it was? I'm sorry, I may have missed that.
No, the second floor. The additions on the second floor. This is, this is the new addition right here, which would add to this bedroom on this side right over here.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, if you could just give us your understanding of the need for the portico.
Well, actually, the need for the portico is just for when it's raining, because when you come in, otherwise you're soaking wet with the kids. It also does actually, what I noticed is it puts us in line with everybody else on the block. Everybody else on the block has a foyer area in this exact space where our front steps are. So actually, it would look better with the rest of the street.
Yeah, you're, you're, the neighbor to your left, it looks like it's enclosed, if I'm not mistaken, right?
To the left and to the right. They're both enclosed.
Do you have any sense of what the front yard setbacks are for those homes on either side of your property?
I do not. You can stop showing your screen. Any questions from the audience at this point? I see no hands raised. I'll close this public portion of this hearing. Any comments from the board?
I'll start. I, I think that this is a modest addition. I think that the property in the house could absolutely handle it. I think it'll make the house more. I think it'll make the house more functional and I'm happy to support the application.
Steve?
Yeah, I mean, without the benefit of exact measurements, when you stand at the house, it's clearly further back in the lot, in its lot than its neighbors. And the addition doesn't change that. The portico, as the applicant indicated, kind of brings the house up to, you know, the standards of every other of the, of his neighbors on, on both sides. So I'm in support of the application.
Anyone else?
It seems like a modest addition and I could be supportive as well. Thank you.
I would agree with my fellow board members' comments. I think aesthetically, it is, presents very nice. And so the house already does not conform as, as it currently exists. This does not make it anything unusual for the neighborhood, let's put it that way, in terms of the, the extension for the front door. So I think it'd be a nice addition and I would also approve this application. So anyone else? Can I have a motion then, in that case?
Move approval.
A second, please. Joe on the second?
Yes.
Eileen?
Amy Lawrence? Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Togge?
Yes.
Sean Drew Hargani?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Craig Plutner?
Yes. Congratulations and good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
Greg, you handled it like a real seasoned contractor.
Yeah, thanks. Any other comments from the crowd in the audience or anywhere else? Then can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make.
In favor?
Second.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the support.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Good work.
Good night, guys.
Good night.